We're here for the six o'clock study session. We have a presentation on the ongoing economic situation from Grace and Rich. Welcome.
Good evening. I think Grace should be, she's here. I think she just needs to share. There we go.
Okay. Is everyone able to see the presentation?
It looks great. Thank you, Grace.
All right. So, good evening. Mayor Golfoles, members of the city council. I'm Grace Castaneda, the budget manager, and I don't know for you is the 2020 to 21 budget development. And before I jump into how we're developing the budget for next year, I'll speak about the current year outlook to give the sense of where we are given the obvious changing conditions. Then I'll pass it on to Finance Director Rich Lee to talk about the strategy of both short term and long term that we're taking the developed budget. And finally, to our City Manager Drew Corbett, who can talk about a plan moving forward to get us to long-term financial sustainability. So this is what we had presented to you during our mid-year update back in January. You can see that overall, our general fund revenues were estimated to be flat to the original estimates at $134 million. Property tax was reported down due to a $2.4 million shortfall in property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee, or what we call VLF, that's the county had reported to us. Sales tax and transfer tax were both up a bit due to the continued spring in the economy. And hotel tax, we reported down due to the Marriott remodeling and also Los Prados being closed for the construction of a new Hampton Inn. But with these differences, our total still stood at $134 million compared to our original estimates. Then the shelter in place order happened, and really in unprecedented speed, we saw our revenues just hold to a stop. So what you see in this slide is our current estimate on where we stand in our general fund revenues. Sales tax, transfer tax, hotel tax, business transfer tax, recreation and golf fees are all impacted. We're looking at an estimated $10 million revenue shortfall from the original and January estimates. Now, last week, the county came back to us on an update on VLF. Initially, and what I had talked about on the last slide, they had reported a $2.4 million VLF shortfall for us. Last week, they came back and told us that St. Carlo School District recently turned into a non-basigate district, which meant more funding in the VLF calculations. So our shortfall is now half a million instead of 2.4 million. Now, I haven't adjusted that slide, this slide to show that we're getting the $2 million back, because there's just so much uncertainty around our revenue sources that overall, we're still estimating about a $10 million shortfall. So an update on the current year expenditures in the general fund. In terms of our discretionary expenditures and response to, you know, the drop in our revenues, in one of the City Managers' weekly updates, one recommendation was not making the $2.4 million additional pension payment. We're now also recommending not making the $1 million housing set aside, but keeping the $2 million transfer for additional CIP so that we don't impact the current funding commitments in our projects. We have realized some savings this year from operations and savings from vacancies year-to-date. And also, in one of the City Managers' weekly updates, a hiring freeze was placed on vacancies in the general fund, which excludes the sworn positions. So through these actions and the savings we can realize from them, this table here shows where we are estimating to land in our expenditures. That, you know, we're estimating to end where we originally thought we would with total expenditures at about $137 million. And when we put revenues and expenditures together with a fund balance, this table shows the general fund summary for the current year. So we started with a $10 million operating surplus from the prior year. So we were $10 million better in our beginning fund balance at $88 million instead of $78 million. But we end up at the same ending unassigned fund balance at $39 million, because the surplus essentially gets wiped out from the drop in revenues. What I want to also point out here is that we were already at a structural imbalance as we were needing to use $3 million of the unassigned fund balance in our original estimates. The structural imbalance is now amplified much more when we're facing with the financial impacts of the pandemic, as you can see, on the use of unassigned fund balance going from $3 million to $13 million. So with where we stand now and where we're heading, I'll turn it over to Rich to speak about the strategies that we're implementing to develop our next year's budgets.
Good evening, Mayor Golfoles, members of the council, Rich Lee, Finance Director. My portion of the presentation focuses on the short-term strategies that we employ to put together the 2021 budget, as well as some long-term strategies that the council will consider as part of the long-term forecast. So as you've seen in 1920, COVID-19 had a significant impact on the city's tax revenues, and for the 2021 budget, we anticipate the same. As you know, tax revenues constitute a significant portion of the total general fund revenues at around 80%. The City Manager had previously noted a CalPERS investment loss for the current fiscal year, and it's worthwhile to note that that's not yet folded into the general fund forecast. We simply don't know where they're going to end the fiscal year. They reported through the end of March, a negative 4% return on investment. They have made up some significant grounds since that time. As of now, they're at negative 0.38%, so they've made up quite a bit of that loss. But it is highly likely that there's going to be a loss, an investment loss, that we're going to need to amortize starting in fiscal year 2023 for the next 20 years thereafter. As Grace mentioned, the 2021 budget does have a $7 million structural deficit. And on the next slide, we're going to talk about short-term strategies that we use to develop the 2021 budget. So the city is in a fortunate position, thanks to prudent, disciplined fiscal practices. When the economy was good, we set aside rainy day funds to weather the impact of economic retraction while the city positions itself toward long-term fiscal sustainability. We've already mentioned freezing non-sworn vacant positions funded by the general fund. If we do extend these frozen positions beyond 2021, there would eventually be an impact on service levels. Also, the discretionary expenditures continue to suspend ADP, the additional discretionary pension contribution to CalPERS, as well as the housing set aside, that's colloquially known as the Boomerang Fund, for property tax increment from the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Also, the $2 million in CIP contribution from the general fund. Wanting to temporarily suspend that for next fiscal year, instead use available reserves in the CIP fund, and then subsequently, the general fund will continue with that additional support beyond that. These strategies have been incorporated into a proposed 2021 budget, which has total revenues of $129 million. That reflects volatility with the property tax and the VLF that Grace spoke of, as well as excess ERAF. The proposed 2021 budget also includes $136 million in total expenditures. I want to note that that reflects the commitment by city staff and diligent efforts from every department to take a hard look at their operating budget to determine the requirements for maintaining the current service level. The proposed budget results in a net operating deficit of $7 million, which will ultimately be a drawdown on unassigned reserves. In the long term, in order to position the city for long-term fiscal sustainability, changes are going to need to be made to the city's operations, and these could include options such as permanently eliminating non-sworn vacant positions, suspending the $2 million additional transfer to CIP, as well as changes to employee compensation through the labor negotiations process, and other options that will be presented to the council at a study session next month. In addition, staff recommends transitioning to a one-year budget cycle, appropriate action in response to economic volatility, and provide council with greater fiscal minimalness. The city's five-year CIP plan will continue to update that on an annual basis, and we're anticipating that this will be a temporary transition, hopefully to return to the two-year budget cycle in 2022, 24. In terms of next steps, we'll return to the council on June 1st for the first public hearing for the budget, then again on June 15th for the second public hearing and budget adoption. With that, after no questions, I'll be turning this over to the City Manager to discuss the city's fiscal sustainability plan.
Thanks, Rich. Can you, can you advance to the next slide, please? No, thanks. Okay, so in terms of getting back to long-term fiscal sustainability, what I'm recommending is we take a two-phased approach to this, and Phase One would be focusing on the existing structural deficit of $7 million. So what we need to do over the next year is cut $7 million annually out of the budget. So we have to make cuts that are going to be permanent for the duration. And then Phase Two would be focusing on addressing the impact of the CalPERS returns. And why I'm recommending that we do this in two phases is that in the short term, after we get the 2021 budget passed, we need to really address the structural deficit for the 2122 budget, and which is, that's why the Finance Department has recommended going to a one-year budget cycle for the next two years, because we're really going to be redoing next year's operating budget completely with the goal of eliminating that $7 million structural deficit through a series of predominantly expenditure cuts. That gives us the time then, in starting in 2122, once we've closed that structural deficit, to assess the CalPERS losses from 2019, when they start to hit our budget starting in 2023. But it gives us time to assess that impact in relation to overall economic recovery and see how well we're recovering, if we're perhaps doing better than we expected, that may lessen the impact of the CalPERS losses. If things are not recovering as quickly, we may have to make additional cuts in addition to addressing the CalPERS losses from the current year. And it also gives us time to consider additional revenue enhancement measures if we want to go down that route in 2022. So, you know, really, $7 million out of the general fund budget, I think, is a little bit over 5%. As Rich mentioned earlier, they have, the Finance Department and the remaining operating departments did a great job really trimming this, the next year's budget to get as lean as we could without impacting service levels. So cutting $7 million is not going to be an easy task, and what we want to do is come back with an entire suite of options in a study session for council to consider, the different levers that we could pull to close $7 million permanently. So it'd be really easy to do that on a one-time basis, but the problem is, is we've got a structural imbalance where our ongoing revenues are $7 million lower than our ongoing expenditures. So we have to close that with permanent ongoing reductions. So with that, I think myself and Rich and Grace are happy to answer any questions. Any questions from the council at this point? Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, Grace, Rich, and Drew for this presentation. A question I have about the $7 million, and this kind of goes a little bit along with the question I think I gave last, or I asked for the last presentation, is my concern is that that estimate is a little bit too optimistic, and that as we learn more and we go through, that that's going to end up being a little bit higher than that, or perhaps substantially higher than that. How confident are you in that number? And like what, if you have a range that it can be, a lot of people, a lot of constituents have been asking me, like, how bad is it going to be? Obviously, you don't have a crystal ball, but do you have a feel for how confident you are with this particular number?
Sure, I'd be happy to take that if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So there are the city's number two and number three tax revenues, that's sales tax and TOT. Sales tax for the current fiscal year, we worked with our sales tax advisor in looking at the different types of business segments and categories that are impacted by COVID-19 and to what degree. Essentially, if they are an essential business, are they open for business? If they're a restaurant, are they currently open? Are they doing dine-down? All of these considerations were folded into developing what the impact of sales tax was going to be for the current fiscal year. In developing the assumption for the 2021 budget, we had to give a best estimate of when we believe that the current shelter in place was going to end, and then how long the recovery was going to be from where the taxable sales currently are to where, if there will be a return to where they once were, that trend that they were once on. There's a challenge that we have with sales tax, and that is the data that we get is essentially six months in arrears. For example, the most recent sales tax data that we have is for tax year 2019, the third quarter. So we won't see the true, the true impact of COVID-19 for another six months. At that time, we'll have a better idea of what the true impact to the city and the resultant sales tax revenues are going to be. That's a similar concept for TOT. That information we don't get until about two or three months in arrears because of the reporting lag that we have. We provide hotels essentially two months from the end of the date of the day of service until the payment is due. Because of that lag, we're not, we don't really have the true picture of how that's impacting our hotels. We do have information from the Visitors Bureau of region-wide how that's impacting the industry as well as the region, but San Mateo-specific hotels, other than calling them individually, which we have done, we don't have the actual financial impact to TOT yet, but we will.
So if I could just add to that briefly, I think Councilmember Rodriguez, we're trying to strike the balance between, you know, being as accurate as we can with the information that we have, and knowing that when you're talking about $7 million to cut, it's in some way, shape, or form going to impact service levels. So we want to be cognizant of that, too, and maintain service levels as best as possible. And part of this plan and part of the $7 million assumes that we always carry a fair amount of unassigned fund balance. So it gives us some cushion in case we're wrong on the downside, without even touching the 25% operating reserve. So we're trying to build that in and be flexible as we learn more.
Sure, and then one quick follow-up question regarding the kind of the shorter-term emergency operations optimization that you've conducted so far. How aggressive would you categorize that move? Like, have we gone basically as far as we can on that, and any more is going to start to be cutting into muscle, or is it, other than that, like, we still have a couple more levers to pull if you thought it was necessary?
I don't think, you know, when you, I think we've trimmed as much as we can out of the operating budget before we start having some level of impact on service levels. And, you know, when you're, when you're holding positions vacant, that obviously will save money, but that starts to come at a cost with a decline in service levels. And then other things we do is kind of, I mean, we've done the things we can do by not making discretionary pension payment and the consideration for not making the housing set-aside payment. The other things that we would consider doing, you know, when you talk about, okay, well, don't make the contribution to capital, well, that creates deferred maintenance potentially. And so you start really being penny wise and pound foolish, because your down-the-road cost is going to be a lot higher. So we are at the point of being beyond any really discretionary cuts.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Thanks.
I've had a couple of questions.
Myself, I'm muted myself, sorry. Diane, and then Councilmember Lee. Go ahead, Diane.
I just want to make sure that I understand the picture here. $7 million is a for sure deficit for the coming fiscal year. Do I have that part right? You're all muted.
That is our best guess as to, with all the short-term strategies that we've implemented, that's our best guess as to what the deficit is going to be, yes.
Okay, and what is unclear after that is how fast things come back, right?
Correct. That's the question before is, one, when will the shelter in place be concluded? And two, how quickly can our economy recover?
The $7 million isn't for sure. $7 million after that, we don't know. And then it is, and for the $7 million deficit, you intend to make it up from some of the money you have set aside, correct? Or you're just going to leave it hanging out there?
So in the short term, that's what, that's why the city is in a fortunate position. It gives us the time for the council to make those decisions. So for 2021, that's our time to get our plan in effect, so get direction from council and then make those changes during 2021, so that by the time we get to 2022, the plan is in effect.
So you have some money to cover the $7 million in 2020 months?
Correct.
And that's without cutting into the 25% reserve?
Correct.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that I understood how much we got to make up, and we got some money at this point to at least deal with this best predicted scenario that you have of a $7 million shortfall. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, sorry.
Yeah. So I was, I was just wondering, I think, you know, as Councilmember Pappin was clarifying for us, you know, what we do for this fiscal year with our unassigned fund balance, you know, being able to, being able to leverage that in this moment, you know, with the rainy day fund is there and we can use it, that makes a lot of sense. I think for me, what, where I would like a lot more clarity is, is in better understanding, what are some of the built-in assumptions for the forecasting in the future, and making sure that there's, you know, there's a lot of clarity and transparency in terms of like, are we, are we assuming that, you know, in quarter one, 30% of our businesses, our retail businesses will potentially not even come back? I mean, like, how, you know, where do we, what are we basing this on? Like, are there assumptions made in terms of the federal funding and potentially any cost recovery? Those kind of things for me are still a question in terms of, you know, our process and then making our process as transparent as possible to the public and laying out what all of our assumptions are to base this analysis for the forecasting. And then, so that's number one, and then number two, I'm, I, you know, when we look about the question of service levels, and for me, the other, the question that follows that question is, is goals. And how do we, you know, looking at our, maintaining our existing service levels or cutting our existing service levels, how does that, how does that sort of parse out in terms of our climate action goals, or our, you know, the other kind of mandated goals that we have coming down from the state and those kind of things? So couching this conversation in the broader picture of what our goals and then also state requirements are, and, you know, where there might be gaps or cuts, where we might have been aspirational in some places, maybe we need to, we need to, we need to draw back, I don't know. Those are the kind of things that I'm wondering about. And then, and then the third piece that I'm, you know, that I'm interested in is, you know, in the analysis, laying out where, where are we making decisions about, you know, a today investment that will, as Drew said, you know, save us tomorrow? So, you know, so a maintenance investment today that could save us millions over the long run, and helping to understand, you know, where those trade-offs are, and really pinpointing where those investments, you know, you feel like those investments need to be. Those are my questions.
Can I actually direct that to Drew? Drew, you had started to answer Eric's question about what it meant to cut into muscle and whether our priorities that Amherst was just listing off would be affected by the budget cuts that you're projecting? And I think the second part of Amherst's question definitely has to do with what things we would be pound foolish to neglect right now, and what do those things actually look like? Are we talking about deferring street paving? Are we talking about deferring the levees? Am I getting at your question, Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Okay, so Drew, can you drill down on those things a little more specifically? Sure, well, for, for the levee, no, we wouldn't delay that. We're going to move forward with that, that's bond-funded, similarly with the wastewater treatment plant. So a lot of our large capital has dedicated funding sources. When we come forward with sort of the suite of options that could be done to erase this $7 million deficit, it's going to come with an analysis of what does that mean? What does it mean for service levels? What does it mean for investment in our, in our infrastructure? So just as an example, we could, we could cut the $7 million deficit pretty easily, right? I could say, we're going to take those $3 million of positions that are vacant, and we're just going to take them out. We're not, they're gone from the budget, there's $3 million right there. Now, there's a service level impact there, because you've just lost a number of employees that were providing a service. So we would, but this, just bear with me, this is just an example, right? You could do that, and then the general fund spends about $4 million a year transferring to the capital improvements fund. For, $2 million goes to one of the contributions for our road repaving, and then the other $2 million goes to other general capital, which we've been using to do the high-voltage conversions. So you could stop all of that. There's $7 million. Now, I wouldn't recommend that. I certainly wouldn't recommend not funding the streets appropriately, because you're going to defer that maintenance, and it's going to cost you a lot more down the road. It's something we could do, but we're not going to recommend it because of the impact it has. So we're going to have to look at, or I would recommend we look at other things. All of the things that we come up with, and it'll be a combination of things that we ultimately would decide on, or different ways to come to the $7 million and have different service level impacts, right? Some of the things you do won't have service, service level impacts, but they affect compensation, right? And so it's, it's all of those factors that we're going to have to consider when we come forward with the different options of how we could cut this, how we could eliminate this $7 million deficit. Does that answer your question? We could be here for a long time trying to answer that question, but does that answer your question for now, Councilmember Lee?
Yes, it does.
I was reading your lips. It looked like, yes, perfectly, he did a great job, is what I was reading.
Yes, I really appreciate it, and I'm sure that, you know, this is going to be a very involved and well-thought-out process. You know, I think, you know, those are the things that I think I'll, you know, I'll be looking at, you know, as we get further along in the process, is just being as clear as we can be about, about the assumptions, about the trade-offs, and helping us as a council and also the public really understand what these decision points are.
Councilmember Pappin, you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, I think there will be trade-offs, no doubt, and they'll come down the line. I think the biggest thing for me, and I bet you all the council will concur with this, I'm going to go out on a limb, get us the most bang for our buck. If I could give one edict, that's what I'd like to see, and I know you can do it, I know there'll be a lot of weighing that goes on, but... I know there'll be a lot of weighing that goes on, but I'm confident that we can make some, be within our budget and, and still keep things going.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Uh, Councilmember Lee also brought up a question about FEMA cost recovery. I do want to provide a little bit of update on that. I believe on the consent agenda for the seven o'clock meeting is a, a form, it's called the Cal O E S Form 130. And it doesn't date to the city manager and myself as the authorized authorities to interact, be the, be the point of contact for FEMA and Cal O E S. We are tracking our costs that are eligible for FEMA reimbursement. In terms of whether we're assuming that we're going to incorporate those reimbursements from FEMA into our budget, the answer is no. And the rationale behind that is typically FEMA's carable events are localized. There's the earthquakes and floods. Those are usually localized to a specific region in, in the United States. One example is the Northridge earthquake that occurred over 20 years ago. It was not until three years ago that FEMA finally closed out that claim. In terms, Northridge did not actually get the money until that time. So it wouldn't be prudent for San Mateo to make that assumption of getting that money back anytime in the near future. This, the COVID-19 event is, it is pandemic, it's worldwide. And within the United States, it's every single municipality, county, state that's being impacted. So every, presumably every government will be filing a claim with FEMA. It will be quite some time before the city receives any funds, if any, from FEMA. That's the thought that goes behind that, that assumption.
Also a good reminder that anybody who finds themselves to be part of FEMA's revenue stream should also find a way to get the heck out of that revenue stream. So let's get out of the flood zone as quickly as possible because they're going to stick it to all the people who, who they can. I, I had a question. Rick, did you have any questions at this point?
Well, I, I have a comment.
Jump in.
Sure. I mention this because I'm dealing with this at the SBWMA right now. We've seen a huge reduction in collected, collected waste, which leads to work reduction for employees there. And while we're thinking about work reduction, I did a lot of research and I found that there's a state program at the Employment Development Department called Work Share, where employers can enroll in this program, they can cut the workers' hours, we pay the workers for what their hours are, and the unemployment office seeks to make up the difference. So if we cut 20% of, I, this way more people stay at work. We're able to continue offering programs, maybe for a shorter period of time, but we can still offer programs. I think it's a great option for us to look at rather than just looking to eliminate programs and other things. I think it should be a first step. So this is at the Employment Development Department.
And that's, that's a very good point, Rick. I, I, it is important for anyone to know that you don't have to be laid off in order to be eligible for additional funds from E D D. Unemployment insurance also applies if your hours are cut. And Drew, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was already part of your thinking? You understood that some employees, including per diem employees, if they get their hours cut, they would be eligible for those services and we will help those employees to apply for those things?
That's correct.
Great, thank you. Excellent. So my questions, I got a couple of questions. First, as far as our, our C I P savings and C I P funds, are we looking at the cost of construction going down? And is that a place where we may see some cost recovery or, or cost savings is in the cost of construction going down for our capital improvement projects?
I think it's possible. Right now, the, the bonds that we issued for the flood control on the streets, based on the bids for the flood control, was going to cause us to need to eat, eat into even more measure S dollars to, to finish up the streets. So, so at this point, what we're hoping is that we will see some level of construction cost decline that will allow us to, to do all the streets with the existing funds that we have. We do plan on coming back to council, probably in the early fall with an update on where we are with the streets and, and at that point, we'll probably have a, a little bit better idea as to what we're seeing with construction costs.
Okay. Well, here's, here's hoping that we can find some savings there with the cost of construction going down. My next question has to do with the structural aspect of the deficit that we're facing. You've, you've placed it at about 7 million and I think that the hope by all of us is that we can cut the 7 million out structurally and still not just be providing critical service, services, but also the services that people really enjoy and, and want and, and that are important for everyone to live here. But what goes into the $7 million structural deficit? So that means the, we're still paying the interest on the unfunded pension liability in an amount somewhere around $15 million? Is that, is that close to the right number?
So, well, what you're speaking of is the, the amortized cost of the, effectively the loan payment back to Calpers. Yes, that amount is $16 million. And before COVID, we had anticipated that would effectively increase by 67% over the next 10 years. Now, with the anticipated investment loss, that's going to be even exacerbated even further.
And that represents a percentage, a percentage of the operating budget? What, what does that percentage equate to? 16 million is?
So our current operating budget is about 135 million in the general fund. So just, just over 10%.
So I just want to, the 16, though, I think is a citywide number. So I want to say for the general fund, I believe that number is closer to 12. And I think that, but we, I, so I think that calculates to about 8% of our operating budget goes to an interest payment to Calpers.
The distinction that you're making, Drew, is that you're cutting out fire? What, what's the distinction you make? No, I'm sorry. Oh, 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 I'm sorry. So, so the distinction that you're making is that the 16 million applies to all employees, including current employees? As opposed to the 12 million that only applies to former employees? Is that the distinction?
No, no. The, the, the 12 million applies to all employees. What I'm saying is, is that the 16 million cuts across all of our city funds, including the wastewater, the sewer fund, the construction services fund, the advanced planning fund. So all of those funds have operations in them. So they all share in that 16 million. The, the lion's share, 12 million, is the general fund share. And that includes, that includes the legacy costs for the fire department.
Okay. It's, it's not hard to see that that was there before COVID-19. It's part of the structural piece that exists already. And it's, when we're addressing this with, I guess what I'm trying to articulate is that trying to recover those costs, trying to pay down the, the unfunded pension liability shouldn't come at the expense of services for, for residents. And so when we approach it that way, we have to understand that, that that's where it should come from. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but structure, the way that Calpers is set up and the way that the state regulations in this area are set up is that we can't reduce any, we can't reduce any benefit to all of those former employees. Not that we would want to, but the only way to, to recover these costs, the only way to make up for that, for the unfunded pension liability is to either cut those essential services that residents rely on or restructure the way that we're paying our employees moving forward. Is that oversimplifying it? I, I, I think that, I think that that's, those are two of the main ways that we can address the structural deficit that you're talking about.
That's correct.
All right. It's, it is a daunting, daunting challenge. The pie, as several people have said in the last 24 hours, the pie is not getting bigger at this point, the pie is getting smaller. But we already had in mind that we were trying to, to generate new sources of revenue and to the extent that those things are still on the table. I, for one, and I, I would, I would imagine my other fellow council members are still open to anything that you think is both feasible and helpful at this stage. Whatever those things are, we should continue to move forward. Any other questions on this, on this item before we go to public comment? Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, as of four o'clock today, we had no emails on it. I had just refreshed our speak-up screen and there are no requests, no public comment requests. And checking the call-in number, there is nobody calling in. So we have no public comment on this item.
And, okay, that is good. I will close the public comment period then and bring it back to the council. Going forward, I, I think it's, this is something we want to keep our eye on. I appreciate all the recommendations that Drew has made. Drew, I'm not ready to necessarily pull the trigger on any of these things. I think this sounds like a multi-step process. Let's get it on the main agenda first and, and get more public comment, flesh out some of these ideas that we're talking about, and then maybe bring it back a second time to actually vote on it and, and implement these new policies. How does that sound as a way to go forward?
Yeah, what I would, what I was hoping to do is, is to have a dedicated study session next to really talk about the, the things, the levers that we could pull and the impact they would have. And in, in an ideal world, if council were, were amenable to it, I'd, I'd love to do this as a, as a special meeting so that we're not time constrained with, with the study session timing and so that we could really dig into this information and provide council all the information it needs to make, to make good decisions about the, the path going forward. And then based on that direction, we would, we would finalize the plan and then bring it back for council to, to approve.
So my suggestion would be to do that sooner than later. I don't know if there's time to do it towards the end of this month, but I, I certainly would do that in May or not later than May.
Sure.
Part of my reasoning, and I wonder what the rest of the council says, is that while we're locked down in this shelter-at-home phase, it's a whole lot easier to, to hop on the computer for this meeting as opposed to when, when all of these regulations get lifted, people are very reasonably going to want to get out of town a little bit. It'll be much harder to schedule this meeting. Anyone else have a strong feeling on that?
I agree with that.
I thought I saw that you needed something done before June anyway. Is that right?
Well, Ju, June will be the budget, public hearing and the budget adoption. And, and I think we're, you know, we're fairly set on, on 2021 unless we get different direction from council. I think the, the bigger part is, is to go forward and, and how we're going to close the deficit. But I do think, and, and I can confer with finance, but I think we could be ready to, to bring that, that suite of, of options to council at some point in May. So I'll, if it's okay, I'll talk with them offline and come up with some potential dates. And we can work with council to figure out what the best date for that is in May.
Excellent. That's perfect. So you have all the direction that you need from us, Drew. Thank you for the, um, thank you for the presentation, Rich, Grace and Drew. That's it for this meeting and I will see you all back here at seven o'clock for the regularly scheduled meeting. Thanks, everybody.
See ya.
Thanks.